Hey, this is Pastor Curry, pastor of the Yeezy Iron Fair Baptist Church, Wilmington's most exciting church, the church that love ya and anything you could do about it. Today on Coffee with Curry, we have a double hitter for you. We got, we have Councilman Jay Street who's gonna be here. We want to talk about, you know, the whole notion of the top lawyer in the state, or one of the top lawyers in the state was sick on Senator Darius Brown to bring a case that he could not do. Today on Coffee with Curry, we just gonna really talk about the racism and how the length that people will go in order to get one of us. And also, we're gonna give you an opportunity to see some of the press conference, and I want to let you know the update on our theft or break-in here at the center. Listen, call somebody real quickly, tell them that Jay Street is gonna be on Coffee with Curry, and let's get after it. And we're back. As I indicated, we were going to have this conversation because there is some serious concern that I have as, as a TV host, as a person who's a citizen of the Delaware community, that Attorney General in the case as bringing the charges against Senator Darius Brown. Now, again, we're not here to debate whether or not him and that young lady had an altercation. I don't want to do that anymore. I'm tired of that case. But what I'm concerned about is, I'm told that the Attorney General assigned an attorney who is one of the top attorneys, who normally handles the murder cases and things of that nature, to a case that was considered a misdemeanor. How could that be so?
Well, she can assign whoever she wants to assign. But it's also reported to me that not a lawyer, at least two, and there may have been three, but she sent her top guns to prosecute this Class A misdemeanor. Now, unfortunately for her, there are too many instances where they haven't done well with whole pro- high-profile murder cases. You know, lost one that has to be redone, and I'm not sure that it's gonna be able to be redone. And in my opinion, they need to stay in their lane because we have too many problems with unsolved murders and situations where murderers that appear to be guilty on the surface don't get convicted. But I think it's bigger than that. And I could be wrong. Here's a fact of the matter. Senator Brown was the lead on most of the police reform legislation.
Yeah.
Most of that police reform legislation got passed. We didn't get changes and modifications to the Policeman's Bill of Rights, but it was a successful year. Well, I'm not so sure that she and Senator Brown always saw eye to eye on that legislation. But what we do know is that, well, I shouldn't say "we," I should say "from my opinion." From the inception, they were on a seek-and-destroy mission with Senator Brown. And from the beginning, when unlike any other elected official that's been arrested, state police issues a mugshot.
Yeah.
And they issue a press statement. Well, the Attorney General is the chief's law enforcement official in the state. The likelihood of the state superintendent of police making that decision by herself, I think is slim. And my better judgment tells me it's speculation that there was a conversation that said, "No, we're gonna get him."
Yeah.
And that's the way we started. Now, what we don't know is who called the police? And I find it strange at best that we didn't get anything in the public press, as hard as they were pursuing this, by the 911 call.
Right.
Okay, so who made, who made the call to police? Was it the victim? Was it the restaurant? And then what we'll never know is, and see, this is the kind of game, this is the kind of methodology that some police officers use when, when they make arrests, and that is if you have a victim or a potential victim that is hesitant about going forward, then they say, "We're gonna do this, that, and the third to you, or you could be subject to this, subject to that." We don't know what happened. But what we do know, crystal clear from the trial, that you got your top guns prosecuting this case and opening a statement to the jury. "I don't have any witnesses, and we don't have any video." But there is video footage
Yes.
of him standing next to the table. And there, in that video, the footage that they, that they have, you can't see any physical situation with them. Now, his lawyer said, "Here's basically the video of you standing up next to the table." Well, the victim's initial statement to the police was that she was sitting on the other end of the bench. And his lawyer makes it crystal clear, "Wait a minute. If he's standing up over here, and your first statement was you were at the end of the bench, that bench is six foot long. It's physically impossible for him to have a physical altercation with you." My point being, they knew that
Right, right.
when they arrested him.
Right.
And they certainly knew it before they went to trial. And so what I sat here and said last week, "Why would you bring this case forward in the first place?" Okay, and why would you have this young lady go through this? Like there was gonna be a conviction, and if she didn't know, you should've known. You can't win with this. And here's what happened. Nine o'clock, they had oral argument. Both sides had to present. I'm assuming that took at least an hour. So let's say the jury goes into session at 10 o'clock. I don't know what time they went in. All I know is 11:30, we had a verdict of not guilty.
Unbelievable.
Okay, so that speaks for itself, and it's a Delaware jury.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, now, there's so much you shared. Number one, I don't want those who are watching us to miss the very critical things. Number one, this is the treatment that happens to a black man or a black person in the state of Delaware. Now, you, you shared how, why would they even bring the case? I believe, my opinion, they brought the case so that the President Pro Tem can do what he did. Put it in the paper, put a lot of noise out there. He don't have to be guilty, but we can strip him. And I believe that's exactly why they did it.
Seek and destroy.
Yeah.
And it's the oldest tactic, one of the oldest tactics that, that you ever used. And I don't think that could stand the fact that he was, in fact, effective. And I want to throw something else into this. You know, last night, we had county council. Yesterday afternoon, committee meetings, and, and the Public Safety Committee, I mentioned the fact that the report on the Lamont Moses shooting was clearly not complimentary to the Newcastle County Police Department. And I had said at the time that I had two things that I wanted to talk about. Well, I got so enthralled in giving my view of the report and what it said, and the fact that the Attorney General made it crystal clear when she made her presentation to the family and to, to the family's lawyer and those of us who were invited, that when she made the recommendations in the report from the experts, that there was great pushback from the county. So I got involved in that, and I forgot to mention the second item. So at the end of council meeting last night, I mentioned the second item. The second item is, a month or so ago, there was a county police officer arrested for allegedly dragging a young, a 16-year-old female by the hair, pulling her by the hair, and then dragging her on the ground while she was handcuffed. And I said, "Okay, he's been arrested. Why hasn't the body camera footage been released?" And the response I got from the police chief was, "'Cause he's been indicted." So I said, "Well, what does that have to do with it?" Well, that was several weeks ago. I raised it again last night. And the police chief said, "We developed a new policy that says when there's an indictment, that the video, the body camera footage will not be released." And I said, "Wait, wait, wait, wait a minute. You just arbitrarily pluck this policy out of the sky, and now all of a sudden, you're God, you're in charge. That's simply not acceptable." Well, I meant what I said. But the problem is, in my opinion, goes straight to the Attorney General.
Yeah.
And the reason I say that is, in May of 2020, I was invited by the young people who were planning to have a demonstration to sit with them when they met with the governor, the mayor. Senator Brown was there, Mouse was there. Deion Wilson, Wilson, the elder who's always been active in the community, was there with the young people. And I made it clear to the governor, "I'm here to support them. If what we were doing worked so well, we wouldn't be in this situation." And whatever, I'm here to support them, whatever they decide, I'm supporting them. And I didn't think it was a good idea to have a demonstration, but I said, "If that's what y'all want to do, I'm gonna support you." They successfully negotiated with the mayor and the governor. They got the mayor to agree that regardless of whether he got funded or not, he would start the body camera program, and Wilmington Police would have body camera footage. They got the governor to agree that he was gonna try to work on body cameras statewide. Well, Street, why are you pointing your finger at Kathy Jennings? Because they passed the legislation. Every police department has to have body camera footage. Body cam, a body camera program. But they haven't said what the rules, regulations, or procedures are going to be as relates to release of the footage. Okay, other jurisdictions, it's 24 hours, it's some, it's 48 hours. Well, that question has to be answered. And opposed to me picking the fight, because Newcastle County as a government has been silent about the body camera footage. And in response to that report, well, I'm not gonna beg them to do the right thing because now this is a statewide issue. And in my opinion, was no need of those young people sitting there and successfully negotiating to get the body cameras, and then somebody just arbitrarily decide, "Well, if somebody's arrested, we're not gonna release the footage." And here's a fact of the matter, in my opinion. Okay, this is a little black girl.
That's where I was gonna go.
Okay, and it was a white officer whose picture's in the paper. But if a black officer
Yeah, yeah.
had drug a little white girl across the ground and pull her by her hair and drug her by the handcuffs, the body camera footage would have been on TV, and they, the, the black officer wouldn't have been arrested, it, wouldn't have been indicted. They'd be arrested and be in jail by now. And this old Delaware way and not making a decision, and somebody standing in the way and plucking rules out of the air, and it's the exact same thing I said about the Lamont Moses shooting. Okay, let three black cocks from the city of Wilmington go up into Centerville or any elite area of, of, of this state and shoot and kill a young white guy. And all the laws, regulations, policies, and procedures will change. And as I said before, it'd be just like Monopoly, go straight to jail. And again, this Delaware way is not gonna work for me. So I'm not gonna beg the county executive or county council to pass legislation because it's bigger than them. It sits right in the Attorney General's lap, and at this point, it's not, it shouldn't sit in her lap. I'm saying now publicly to the city delegation that y'all need to establish a policy that says body camera footage is gonna be released by all police agencies in a certain period of time, regardless, it'd be in, well, you know, it'll, it'll have an impact on the trial. Well, you're gonna show at the trial.
Right.
You're not gonna be able to change it.
Right.
So what's the use of having a program if you're not gonna release the body camera footage?
Well, see, the problem is, Jay, and, and we're gonna go to a break in a minute, but the problem is, is that there's one way for the blacks, and there's another way for the whites. What we're really addressing today is racism. Racism, racism in a very, in its full effect. People will watch you and say, "You know what? He always start in trouble." But you know what? Good trouble is what you've been starting. Because you're bringing to attention, and I think every person who watches us, and I'm finding that a lot of people are watching us. They need to understand, I would not be talking about a Darius Brown today, you would not be talking about the meeting you had with the, the county yesterday if it was not pointing directly to racism. The standards that they have for when a white police officer does something or when a, a person of, of color does something, then all of a sudden, it changes. Arbitrarily, they made a policy. Why wasn't the county informed of this policy? You are a county council person. If they made this decision, then it should have certainly been made known to the county council. But no, we're white, we can do what we want to do. And for all of you who continue to support, because they giving you chicken dinners or giving you a little money here, especially black leadership, and for us to continue to live in this level of racism, until it hits your house, you may sit quiet, but at some point, you're gonna have to wake up and say, "It's them today, but it could be me tomorrow." I don't think Senator Brown thought, 'cause he's a pretty clean guy, that he would be under such, treated to the level that he was treated. I didn't, he is a graduate of Delaware State. He pretty much had a clean life. We, we don't have much of, much of nothing on him. He worked his way up through the city council. He got the position behind State Representative Margaret Henry. He didn't know. And you've raised some very tough things, and you're not a lawyer. Who called the cops? The girl did not call the cops. Somebody did, but where is the 911 call? You've raised some very key things, which says they're all working together. They're all working together, and the Attorney General, I don't know her, but I really challenge whether or not she understands that the Delaware way cannot be anymore. At some point, we're gonna have to raise up, and I really appreciate the black clergy and the black leadership that was here a couple of weeks ago, a couple of days ago to, to do the press conference for our Darius, because now I'm starting to see the unity because it's affecting various areas of our community. Racism is real here in Delaware. It is real.
Well, and I was just as pleased as I could possibly be to be sitting in this room Sunday when I saw the unification coming together.
Yeah.
But I also feel like we're starting all over.
Yeah.
It's like we're starting from the very beginning. Only this time, we gotta deal with technology. And that could be good.
But can I say this to you, and I never cut you off because you are elder that I do respect.
Who you calling elder?
Elders, you're not an old man, you're just an elder. You're, you're, you're one of the ones who fought. You named, quite often, you named people who you were trained under. They were men of integrity. You hear me? They were men who said, "I'm gonna make sure we leave a legacy and a heritage." But I'm gonna tell you what has happened. And this, I've only been in Delaware for 20 years. What has happened is, we've gotten black folks with a little education who have sold us out. Who have, and I'm saying it, I have five, six earned degrees who got a little education, they were able to talk the language, get in positions, get their family members' jobs in the city and the state, and, and, and way with the black community. That's what happened, and yes, we're starting all over again. And I am ticked off about it more than you can be, but I understand your, your feelings because we had come a long way, but we, we're regressed because we have black people sitting in positions, city level, county level, state level, who are watching the liching and saying nothing. And, and for you to be the only politician that I'm hearing from right now speaks to what I'm saying for real.
Well, that's one way of looking at it. But the reality is, and you and your colleagues in the clergy understand this better than most people, but for 35 years, I was Executive Director of a Lutheran agency.
Yeah.
Lutherans are committed to social justice
Right.
and positive change nationally and internationally. And even when I was out there, took a position that maybe my board didn't agree with, didn't matter.
Right.
They wanted me involved, they wanted me to be visible, they wanted me to be seen. So I have had my professional career latitude that everybody doesn't have. Historically, the only people that had the kind of latitude that I've had throughout my public service career have been ministers,
Okay.
doctors,
Right.
lawyers,
Okay.
and morticians.
Okay.
But, you know, I've had that, and everybody doesn't have that. So, so, so I understand that, and it's just a fact of the matter. And, and you said earlier, said, "Well, here he is making trouble." And what I have had to say to people, if I don't speak up and Mouse don't speak up, who's gonna do it?
That's why I don't buy the, the last part of your comment, you're right. Who's gonna do it? But even though very few had the latitude that you have, you don't have to go along with wrong. You may not be able to speak up and, and, and fight against, but you don't need to go along with. Because when you sell your soul, you're soulless. And that's the problem I have. I went to a HBCU, and if they didn't teach us anything, they taught us to speak up and be the top at your game.
Well, I don't know, I don't remember who said it first, whether it was Huey Newton or H. Rap Brown. But one of them said, "If you ain't part of the solution,"
You're part of the problem.
You're part of the problem.
Absolutely.
And we're, we're facing that in, in a very significant way. And, you know, the late, in my opinion, great Hazel Plant is like it was, she's still here. I can recall sitting in her living room and her saying, "We got some of them that sold their soul"
Yes.
"for cheeseburgers."
For cheeseburgers, well, you know, I changed their cheeseburger to, to chicken sandwiches because that's what they doing. They giving them a little chicken dinner, and they feeling like, "Okay, you know what? I'm gonna be quiet, I'm gonna hide. No more hiding. We need to clean up our act, and we need to treat each other better." And like you said, last week, to see the unity, it helps me to know a better day is coming. I'm appreciative to, to, to the work that you work, but, but, but Jay, I should not have to just call and say, "Could you please come on?" Not, I didn't have to beg you, but "Could you come on the show?" When, when every black leader should be outraged. We understand the cancel culture, and I want to say that to those who are watching us. I understand the cancel culture. Yes, women have been treated wrong, they've been treated as toys, and they've been disrespected. So have black people and others. So I support when a person has sexually harassed and things of that nature. But the same system that we used on one person, we must use it on another. He was found not guilty. So since he was found not, not guilty, my goal is to make sure he's made whole. And right now, if, for no other reason, I'm gonna support him because he was put in a system, and when he going through the system, and another thing, before I go to my last comment, I'm grateful that he had a good lawyer. Let me just say that, it just hit me while I was talking. Because had he not had the right lawyer, he would have been found guilty without a video, without witness. Because so many people are sitting in jail right now because of not good legal representation.
Or not having any legal representation at all. And the fact of the matter is, you know, Senator Brown's in a position where he could pay for a good lawyer.
Yeah.
Okay? And the critical point I want to make, he had to wear with all to do that. But how many people sitting in jail right now
That's what I'm saying.
don't have, didn't have that capability, couldn't get a good lawyer. And every day throughout the country, you see where people have been in jail for long periods of time, and DNA or a, a new witness or a witness that finally confesses comes forward, and they didn't do it after 30, 40 years in, in jail. So, you know, the system is, it, it needs to be reformed. And I see Senator Brown being a major part of, of that reformation. And for, for him to no longer be on, be the Chair of the Judiciary Committee and not be on the bond bill, it really bothers me because he was affected.
Yeah, well, we're gonna work as hard as we can. We're gonna work as hard as we can to put him, get him back, restore him, reinstate him. We are. And, and what, we can't tell them what to do, but we're gonna put the pressure up. And I, and on our show that you co-host with me once a month, but it's, but you've been coming quite often, is that we have that quiet storm where we're gonna start doing things that's gonna shock people. And we're gonna have to, and the planning is starting, where people are gonna be shocked that the economy is being affected. I'm not gonna tell people what we're doing because that's what they do, they plan against you. But there are some things that's gonna happen, that's gonna put some standstill. And where I am working at right now, our county councilman, is I want to see media coverage for real to expose the racism that's in this state. What other state don't have a, a major TV station to be able to report? So if CNN wants to bring in a national thing, they could. We don't. We have Philadelphia, but they only report what they want to report. We need, right now, we have Channel 28. That's not a TV station that we can use for the whole state. Why? Because I even have to pay for my shows. This is not free. You're not sitting here on a free, a, a public access channel. I'm paying for this. So we, we, we have to have, the media has to be a part of that, and we have to fight as the NAACP, as, as those who are ministers, who are leaders, our voice needs to be heard and not controlled because somebody controlled in the news journal.
Well, the National Anthem starts out, "Would lift every voice insane," for a reason.
Right.
And that's what we're gonna have to do.
Yeah.
And I think I saw, in this room, a new beginning. And I'm excited about that. But it's also a situation where wasn't anybody here, it's gonna back off.
Yeah, that's what's important.
Anybody gonna go run and, and, and go back off because everybody here, everybody was here, is basically independent.
Yeah.
And as relates to his reinstatement, as relates to calling the dogs off and not having a, a so-called Ethics Committee hearing, it's gonna be just like watching the movie Karate Kid. No mercy.
No mercy.
No mercy until you do what's right
Yeah.
by the person that this community elected.
Yes.
Okay, duly elected. And for you to come forward and arbitrarily disenfranchise him, you're not just disenfranchising him, you're disenfranchising every constituent that he has. They put a voice in office, an effective voice, and as a person who shares, my council district shares a major part of his senatorial district, I need him. I need him for just what I started talking about today. Well, I need him to put in a policy and procedure as relates, to release a, a body camera footage.
Right.
Okay, I need that right now. And as I said, I'm not gonna go run into the county and, and, and beg the county executive or beg county council to do this because it needs to be done statewide. And the other is, see, now you got me started. Why does the state of Delaware, who may have a million people, need 49 police forces?
Well, for reasons.
49 police forces, give me a break. But all 49 of them need to have the exact same policy and procedure as relates to releasing body camera footage that has now been imposed on them. That has now been imposed on them.
But that's the confusion and that's how they keep you confused because you got forty-nine police departments in a state this size. This is just unbelievable, number one. But number two, that, that, if you got forty-nine policies, then we can keep you confused. And that's what the problem is. But, but we need a uniform policy, just like the Voting Rights Bill. We need a national one. We need a, we need a statewide policy on body cams. We need a statewide policy on how police, um, um, conduct is to be performed. Or they could take the charters, like they threatened to do under Dennis Williams on everything he did. Didn't matter what he did, we're gonna take the charter. We're gonna take the charter. But we don't hear that language anymore. It's a sign of the racism that we have in this state and it has to get better. Somebody can say, well, why don't you get out of the state since you don't like the, the way we run things? That's the problem. We're not, I'm not gonna run. I'm not gonna run. I'm not gonna be intimidated. But what we are gonna do is we're gonna put a dent and to a point where we're gonna bust open this level of racism so that we can be treated equally. And right now, that's what it's all about. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a real quick break and then we're gonna come back and we're gonna close out the show because I want to show some of that press conference that we, we, we did. It was such a unity here that I was just unbelievable about it. We'll be right back. And we're back. We're trying, we're just having a conversation about the level of racism that's in the state and it affects many areas. I opened up by talking about Darius Brown because I was very disappointed that, um, the Senator, uh, Pro Tem of, of, the president of, of the senate. Who, who really have not restored him as of yet, and they just went back into session last Tuesday. And we are calling for that to happen. He has done so much in our community. And really, as, 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 as County Councilman shared, you know, it's disenfranchising us because he is effective in what he does. But also, we were talking about the various other policies that are very racist or not even policies, people arbitrarily just doing things. But, you know, Senator, I mean, not Senator, but, um, County Rep, one of the things that, that we, we will admit is that there are some good cops. We, we're not, we're not against police officers. We are really for police officers, but we want the policy to be equal and, 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 and fair to all. But one of the things I think was near dear to your heart is that you did talk about the fact that some new information came out, even with the young lady who was dragged.
Well, the fact of the matter is, um, we would never have known that this happened to this little girl. If good cops haven't come forward and say, this happened, um, and we think it's wrong and y'all need to deal with it. So I am truly grateful to those officers, um, who did the right thing. Um, tried to see to it that a, 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 a wrong was dealt with in, in the correct way. And as a former police officer said to me, see, we're in a situation now where good cops are tired of working around bad cops.
Right.
And you're gonna have more and more good cops come forward and, 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 and say, we're, we're not having this. We don't, we don't want to be part of this and we're not going to just turn a blind eye to it. Um, and I, I thought that was fantastic. And, you know, you're gonna have those folks who say, and he's anti-cop, he's anti-this, but here's the fact of the matter. Before I ever got on county council, the late, in my opinion, great Hicks Anderson, one of my mentors. Told me in no uncertain terms in nineteen seventy-five, if you're gonna work with children in this town, you gotta work with the police. And I said, I ain't gonna do it. And he said, oh, you're gonna do it. You either gonna get, you either gonna do it or you're gonna get fired. And before you get fired, I'm gonna put my foot and so forth and so on. But as a result of that, I served on the Wilmington Police Advisory Council with him. And, you know, I served a total of, of twenty-five years. We had discussions, we had debates, we had differences of opinion, but we always worked together. Which is one of the reasons I've been adamant about having intervention specialists and youth workers. Because we had a Wilmington Police Advisory Council and a, and a set of volunteer, community, youth workers. And all the functions that goes on now, we didn't have. We didn't have. And so anybody that says, um, I'm anti-police is, is just not telling the truth. And as relates to me being a councilman, up until the time that, uh, I resigned as co-chair of Public Safety. The record's clear, I did as much for the county police as anybody could possibly do. The fact of the matter is, we went from three hundred to four hundred during the time that I've been there. And everything the police wanted, when the, the Coons administration at the time, they had a grant for tasers. They wouldn't issue the tasers because they said they didn't know how they're gonna maintain them. And I used my political influence, voted for a tax increase that I didn't agree with. So they could have those tasers because the conversation that the president, the FOP at the time had with me and others was. I had some questions about tasers and he said to me, well, what do you want us to do? Tase them or shoot them? I said, meeting's over.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get to such and such tasers. Um, and I had to pay a political price for it. My problem is, after all that, they shooting us anyway.
Yeah, because that's, that's the way it rolls. You're a threat. You're, 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 I'm scared of you. Um, um, I don't, I, I, and, and that's, that's the problem. So I don't want to go back into that, but that, that is, thanks to the police who are honest. My dad worked in the Philadelphia Police Department under Frank Rizzo for forty years. He worked as a, he worked his way up. He ended up being a, a superintendent, I think, yes, as he retired out. And, and, and so I am very much, I was raised with the police officer. I believe in them one hundred percent. We need them for protection, but we don't need these dirty cops who have, uh, who have been raised to be racist and privileged. And, and, and look at black people as being a threat. The only way we can stop them is that we shoot them. That's where our issue is. So I really appreciate, you know, you taking the time today. I'm gonna continue this conversation, uh, 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 councilman with others. But I'm gonna start really paying attention to, um, where our black leadership is. I brought that up on the show today because we are, but too much black leadership have been in the pockets of the racist people. To the point where they can't say anything and they are afraid. It's in the senate, well, not so much because I think Darius is the only black male in the senate, but it's in, it's in, and, and, and in representatives. It's with this county, it's with the city and the state, and we have to start addressing it. But you said something key. Who was in the room the other day? I feel it's a great start and I feel things are gonna get better because they're not afraid. I've never been to jail. So if they lock me up for doing something that is good trouble, I'll be all right.
But see, there's another side to this and I'll close with this. I think it was necessary for us to come together to support Senator Brown. Because if you don't do that, and everybody else looks and sees that, oh, y'all love him to death till something happened to him. And when something happened to him, y'all would know where to be found. And other people are not gonna be willing to step up. If they don't see that when, when other people who step up, that they end up getting supported. Now, why would you step, why would you speak up, speak out and step up when, when you look around and see, well, when all you know what broke loose? Wasn't nobody with him or her?
There was a different message this time. There was a different message this time. You absolutely right. There was a different message. And I think it shocked the folks in Dover. Because they're so used, we do what we want to do. But now they're seeing it's a new day. You did it well by ending this, this part of the show. Because that is exactly why some people may hide who want to speak up. Because I have been the victim of speaking up, but when the light is put on me, people run away. But that didn't happen this time. And I think who was in the room will be able to stand firm and, and, and not in the pockets of, of, of the folks. So thank you so very much, um, Councilman, for, uh, constantly coming in. I know you don't really look for the, um...
No, but in two thousand and four, when I ran, I had two Democrats running against me. And they had a question for me, the candidates for each candidate. And the question of me was, well, it's being alleged that you're a hell raiser, you're a community activist. And you really not concerned about, uh, county issues. You're running primarily to advance your education agenda. What do you have to say about that? I said guilty as charged. That's exactly what I'm gonna do. If you have a problem with that, you shouldn't vote for me now. If you want somebody that's gonna maintain the status quo, you can pick either one of these two. I pointed at both of them. But if you're gonna want somebody that's gonna speak up and speak out, I'm your man.
Right.
And what I'm saying is, if I hadn't done anything else. I've stayed full, I stayed true to my commitment to speak up and speak out. Because I knew then, and I know now, everybody doesn't have latitude to do that.
Yeah. Well, even if they do have latitude, they are not using it. Some people choose not to have the latitude. I keep hearing you give that, that, that excuse for somebody else. But you were taught, like I was taught, but you were taught before I was taught, because you went through Omega Psi Phi much earlier than I did. Excuses are just tools of the incompetent.
Don't even mind you mess of nothing.
And those who use and specialize in their uses will never succeed in life. Therefore, there are no excuses. So guess what? We who are a part of the black community, we must come together and we must stand up. We'll be right back.
I'm glad you're over here. The fact that the NAACP members have come together, it's an important message being sent to this community. It's an important message being sent to Senator Brown. It's an important message being sent to Delaware State Senate. I'm not happy. And I'm gonna start by, let's make this comparison. When I ran for office in two thousand and four, me and Mouse putting up signs out on Route Nine. I promised him that I would do everything I could to give a library on Route Nine quarter. Thirty million dollar library was dedicated in twenty sixteen. But it took me eight years to get it in the budget. It took me four more years before it was finished. It's twelve years. Senator Brown has forty million dollars in the budget right now for a new library on North Market Street. He's three years in. I think I'm pretty good at what I do, but the young man is rolling. You know the system, who plays, who the players are. The Attorney General of this state sent her top guns. To prosecute Darius Brown. And ironically, the open remarks of counsel for the prosecutor was, I don't have any witnesses? And I don't have video. Well, what in the, did you bring the charges for in the first place? Man, let me make my major points. There's something in the law called selective prosecution.
Yes, sir.
I would respectfully represent today that Senator Brown is, his situation is the epitome of selective prosecution. There's also something in the law called malicious prosecution.
Yes, sir.
I would respectfully suggest that Senator Brown, his situation is the epitome of malicious prosecution. Because he's been treated differently, not because of what allegedly transpired. But because of how good he is at doing what he's doing. And because he's good at it as a black man, representing black people, fighting for all people. And see, folks will say, well, the governor sent the nomination for the judge's over. Yeah, he did. But do you think the governor would have made sure he sent African-American nominees? If Darius wasn't sitting there? If he didn't have to confront a male African-American senator, might have had a different result. But if you're the governor and Darius sitting there, would you send the nominations over with no African-Americans? No. He's making a difference. He's being effective and that's why he's being prosecuted. Man, y'all and I agreed, said, restore him. I also said, Senator Secola, cease and desist. Call the dogs off. You have no business after thirty-five years with the Ethics Commission that has no rules and regulations, no written procedures. To take this on, to subject him to that while he needs to be doing his due diligence as our senator. Now, ignore me if you want, but one thing I'm not afraid to do is ask for federal help. Y'all keep running your mouth. Okay, and, and keep on disparaging him and keep setting yourself up for defamation. Don't come crying when I pay the matter that says, um, you, you ask attorneys for the Districts of Delaware, Civil Rights Division of the United States. You need to come in and investigate these investigators. Selective prosecution, malicious prosecution are all illegal. And if anybody thinks they're gonna walk away unscathed, continuing down this road. I would respectfully suggest they're saddling the state. And finally, send this message. When you play in this arena, I don't care if you're black, if you're white, if you're male, if you're female. You can't play in this arena if the thing's him. And I don't want anybody to think that just because you're a woman, you can't be playing in this arena. You can't be immune from criticism, argument, debate and discussion. If that's the way you look at it, you're playing in the wrong arena.
My name's Richard Smith. Everybody call me Mouse. I've been around the scene since the early days when I joined NAACP at ten years old. I have never seen nothing like today. Couple of weeks ago, I said in the paper, when they took Lamar Moses. And they found a way to free the peace on that case. It was a sad day. It was one of my sadness day. Now I'm here again to say, it's another sad day when it comes to Senator Brown, Darius Brown. This man has been ridiculed by the ugly face of the Delaware politicians, Delaware politics. And the sin that you guys don't, too many of y'all don't know nothing about. This guy has been ridiculed by the sin using the Delaware way. Everybody else get a break, but black folks get food underneath the bus. We have never got that shit in this state. This state is like a plantation.
Right.
Twenty-first century plantation. This state is like being a country without no rights. This state, look at our neighborhoods. They're filthy, rundown. Then look at forty acres, nice, clean, walk the streets till three o'clock in the morning. We have never got that, a, 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 a good, nothing good in this state. It's time for us to wake up and say, all these problems we got in the black community are my leadership. Let's pull them to the side. Let's move together. Let's respect the preachers, what God come here for. Let's respect the black leadership, what God put them for. Let, let's respect our organizations, and let's sit down and say, for once and all, this is not gonna happen to a leader or professor or a leader in our community no more. We should have been the ones who called Senator Brown in and took him around the table. We should have been the one who say that you can't do this to Senator Brown. Now we're saying, brother, if I got to get with the preachers and get a petition and, and put all the statement, it's time to say enough is enough, and we are not going for this again. Thank you.
No wonder when I was little, and I would ride on the train with a shoebox full of chicken, and it would always be asking me, "Where are you from?" And I would always say, "Delaware." And the statement that would come out of their mouths was a question. Delaware? We're known.
Come on.
And it's been noted that we're still where we've always been. I'm eighty-three years old, and there's nothing that has changed. Somebody might say, "Oh, Bishop, don't say that. Don't, don't say that." And, and you guys are always fussing and, and always, "Well, when you change up, we'll stop fussing." Until Delaware makes a change, we're not going to stop. As a woman, I know what we go through, but on the other side of the coin, justice is justice. And the saying is, it is what it is. So I'm saying to the Senator, I suggest that you do the right thing. I suggest because I know the persons that I'm seeing in the room where we are can get a prayer through. And if you know like I know, you best do what is right. Senator Darius Brown, listening to his accomplishments allows me to know why you're after him. And I'm gonna tell you why. Because he's a good. He's the greatest of all time.
Sometimes, there is justice, and sometimes, there is just us. Will I ever accept the mistreatment of women? I couldn't love my mother if I did. I couldn't love my wife if I did. I couldn't love my eleven-year-old daughter if I did. But enough is enough. We have to really look at the fact that he was tried in the court by his peers, not the politicians. And he was found not guilty. The legislative session begins this Tuesday, and we are calling upon Senator David Sokola. I hope I said his name right. I'll spell it for you. We're calling for you, sir.
That's right.
We are calling for you, who is the President of the Pro Tem of the Delaware State Senate, to reappoint, reappoint Senator Darius Brown as Chair of the Senate Judiciary Committee and as a member of the Joint Capital Improvement Committee immediately. You may say, "I'm not listening," but sometimes, when you're not listening, you can be stung. And we're back. I wanna first take this opportunity to thank Councilman Jay Street, who has certainly been a true friend to me since I've been here. I've known him from the fraternity side. I've always heard many great things about him, and I was very grateful that I had an opportunity to meet him once I came to the city of Wilmington. Uh, but he speaks out. He's a true man who cares about his community. I'm sure he could be doing other things in his life at this point, but he still makes his way to do what he has to do to speak up for the voiceless, and that's very important. I hope you took time today to hear. People are angry with us. They're gonna be angry because they don't want the truth to ever be told. For the Attorney General to sick-hit their top lawyer who should be out there fighting cases of that, of the murderers who have murdered and things of that nature, they put a top lawyer, a top attorney, on a misdemeanor charge. That is unfair, but that's what happens when you're trying to stop black people. We talked about racism today. It's real. It's live here. I'm gonna be working very hard on trying to figure out how we can get some kind of media into the state of Delaware so that we can have an opportunity to be statewide heard as an African-American people. Because at the end of the day, without that voice, it's, and, and what is being controlled will continue to be controlled, especially the news journal, who, I'm not gonna consider them an enemy because they have been covering us pretty nicely, but we don't get enough coverage to be able to share the concerns that we have as African-American or black and brown people here in this community. So I thank you again for, for watching us today, but I wanna give you that opportunity to hear what has occurred today. Please note, Senator, uh, 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 Darius Brown was found not guilty by the legal system, so therefore, he should be released from any charges, and he should be able to be restored back into, um, his rightful place. Let me also give you an update on our crime fighters. I wanna take this opportunity to thank all of you. We got so many calls, and listen, ninety-nine point nine percent of all the calls we got, one name. You knew who that brother was. And listen, I'm here to announce to you that we have just given the thousand-dollar reward in cash without the person being known to the police or anyone else for the first person who calls us with the tip, and his name, the gentleman who, 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 who broke into our wholeness center, his name is very clearly Rob Dixon. And I wanna thank all of you who looked out for us, who said that we will not have this in our community. He has been, uh, issued a warrant, and he has been arrested, taken off of the streets. And I wanna say thanks to the Wilmington Police Department who did move on that, but I thank those of you who watch us and who decided to speak up, and I guarantee you, we will always have the integrity that we need to have and continue to provide the services that we provide here in the South Bridge section of the city. Again, thank you so very much for the time that we've shared together today. It's been a treat having Councilman Street on. It's been a treat sharing with you the true racism that happens in the state of Delaware. Until the next time, God bless, and I'll see ya.